Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here at the Building Height Workship of August 7th for the City of Titusville. I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I don't see any ministers out there that might want to say a prayer, but how about a moment of silence if you'll join me? Please join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, ungod, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Mr. Senator Niger?
Yes, sir. The format for tonight will be a presentation by staff, and the agenda will include the purpose of height regulations, the history of height regulations between 1992 and 2007, and the changes that we've made and why, the U.S. One Corridor Master Plan of 2007, and time for discussion on the way ahead, and any guidance that council would like to direct staff to take a look at. So with that, we'll turn it over to staff for presentations unless council has any questions before we proceed.
I see none.
Mr. Mayor, for each night, I'm just going to give you a brief summary of the history of the height discussion in the city since 1992. Oh, it is. We'll get there eventually. Okay. So just to give you some background and understanding of the purpose of height restrictions you find in a lot of zoning codes around the country, it has to do with typically protecting fire from fire hazards, protection against aviation accidents, other issues that would be concerned would be protection of a view, or protection of the character of a neighborhood, and protection of light and air. So you can imagine with tall buildings next to small buildings, or it could create shadows, create instructions of views. Those are things that sometimes some cities and counties may want to put some controls on, height restrictions on buildings and other structures. In the City of Titusville, and starting in 1992, there was some starting discussion about height, and with ordinance number seven of that year, there was an additional height above 50 feet by variance in a downtown development district that was allowed. So code restricted height of all structures to 50 feet, but you could go through a variance process with the Board of Adjustment if you want to go above that. In the shoreline mixed-use zoning district, which is a zoning district that's special to all those properties, the majority of those properties along the shoreline, it does not include the downtown area, but primarily from the down, just south of the downtown going all the way to River Edge Drive. There was a conditional use permit allowed that would have to be approved by the city council if you wanted to go above 50 feet of any structure. And in all residential districts, there's currently a, well, there was adopted a maximum height of 35 feet, and there was no option for a variance or conditional use permit or any other kind of waiver for that. So in 2005, there was another ordinance that was adopted, number 30, and it limited conditional use permits for height in shoreline mixed-use districts to only those of east of the U.S. One, Pelican Point and Manzo Park, and provided for a sliding scale of height increases. And so I think my understanding of that was, at that time, was that it allowed for heights to be increased, provided there was additional setbacks from the buildings from the adjacent property lines. That same year, there was another ordinance, number 31, and that purpose of that ordinance was to allow conditional use permits approved by the city council for height in excess of 35 feet for areas zoned R3 west of U.S. One. R3 is a multi-family zoning district, allows a maximum density of 15 units per acre. It's our most high-intensity multi-family zoning. Those properties located west of U.S. One could be allowed to go above 35 feet with this special permit by city council. After public hearings, council did not adopt this ordinance, so currently that's not a In 2006, there was a referendum, a citywide referendum vote on the possibility of restricting height throughout the city to 35 feet, and that referendum failed. So currently, we have several zoning districts with various height restrictions right now. We do not have an overall height restriction throughout the city. In 2007, there was another ordinance, number 12, adopted in March of that year. It deleted the conditional use permits, the option for structures graded to be allowed to go above 50 feet in that shoreline mixed-use zoning district. So currently, that's, you can't go above 50 feet. It did amend what's called a breezeway requirement in the shoreline area overlay. That is a separate zoning tool that is along the entire, the majority of the city's shoreline. It includes a requirement that structures or buildings that are on a property cannot, have to maintain at least 25% of that frontage open to the water. So I'll show you an example of that later on, and that's currently in place now. After that referendum failed in 2007, or '06, the Somerset structures were allowed to be approved, and so right now, those two buildings have nine floors above ground floor parking. And I did identify there was one single-family home lot just to the south of the development. Harbor Point is also another prominent high structure in the city. I know it's been controversial. I've only been here a few years, but I hear about it a lot. A lot of people, there are some people in favor, some people not. I included this photograph here because it was included as part of our visioning exercises we did last year with a consultant, and he included it in here to see what people would think of it as part of a larger list of other photographs to see what the public liked or disliked. And this one got a negative review, primarily from that group. This is something, it doesn't come out very clear, but on this screen, but this is something that our GI specialist did to kind of show a 3D perspective of the city looking northbound. And so you can see which buildings along the shoreline are low and which ones are high, and so it kind of gives some perspective of height throughout the city right now. In 2007, there was a very in-depth public process to come up with a master plan primarily along the U.S. One corridor. Some of the recommendations that we identified in this plan when we looked through it in preparation for this presentation was a recommendation for waterfront development to include a view shed development, shoreline restoration, public purchase of waterfront properties, and development of a citywide trails and park system. Some of the improvements recommended include utility and road infrastructure, visual character criteria, and urban design criteria. And what I mean by urban design, it means how the built form on each of the private properties or public properties along U.S. Quarter, along U.S. One would look and how they would interact or be located within relation to the roadway network. The U.S. One Corridor Master Plan identified, I believe, four major, four primary use areas. The green area there, it's not very clear there, but it's along the water, and that was called the Indian River Waterfront District, and it was just really just planning districts to kind of identify, to kind of focus their efforts for recommendations later. Another area there is called the Residential Preservation District. That's a little bit interior there between U.S. One and Hopkins. Another one was called the Commercial Corridor District. Those are properties that are primarily utilized for commercial uses, and you can see large areas there in brown, or orange, rather, and also a long strip there on U.S., on Hopkins Avenue. And then another one called Cottage Commercial District was more like a neighborhood kind of commercial uses that they identified along the south part of U.S. One in this study area. And so each of these major land use, or study areas within, or districts, rather, in this study, in the U.S. One corridor area, were identified, or treated differently. They had to each have a little bit different recommendations of what would be, what the community, or what the public meetings, the information they got, rather, that they got from the public meetings, what they thought was appropriate. The Indian River Waterfront Character Guidelines, those are the properties that are primarily along the waterline. Some of the recommendations that they got from the public meetings included considering a maximum building height of 35 feet along the water for new development on the properties identified in that district. Also, consideration of the community's desires expressed during the public workshops. The guidelines recommended establishing buildings with a maximum height of 35 feet. I do want to go back, I do, the area to the Commercial Corridor area, I think they were looking at as allowing that, those areas west of U.S. One to have a higher height. Some of the action strategies we found in that plan include establishing a riverfront acquisition trust fund to receive contributions as part of a performance incentive program. So in other words, what this is saying was allow for, limit the height along the water or in the other districts to a certain amount, certain feet, number of feet, and then if the property owner or developer asked for that height to be increased, maybe they could contribute into a riverfront land acquisition trust fund in exchange for height additions on the west side of U.S. One. So that was one of the action strategies identified in that plan. None of this came to fruition. We don't have anything established policy on this. These two maps really just identify the, in green here, properties that are publicly owned, whether they're county-owned, city-owned, or any other kind of organization, public organization that may own property. So obviously, the majority of the property along the waterfront in the city is privately held, and these include parks and include properties that may become parks later. We, this Titusville Tomorrow is a project that we started last year. As I already mentioned, we had a consultant who's helping us do visioning exercises last year to help inform the update to our comprehensive plan. And right now, they're going through that process right now to draft the policies inside our comprehensive plan, and we just wanted to point out, one of their initial draft policies that they included in the list of policies that was presented to you back in April, included a recommendation that along the waterfront, this district is intended to encourage mixed-use development. However, both development intensities, densities, and heights shall be determined by the underlying feature land use, except that building heights shall not exceed four stories. So they weren't, and this is outside the downtown. In fact, in the downtown areas, they're actually recommending much higher heights than we currently even have. Right now, our downtown code has a maximum height of five stories. It does not prescribe a fixed number of feet. It just says five stories. And then in the rest of the shoreline area, or the waterfront area, the consultant is recommending a maximum of four stories in this draft policy. This is not an official policy yet. It's not been adopted. It's only a draft form. There are options to address height. There are several tools. There are transitional height zones. I'll explain what that is in a moment. Spreeways, I've already mentioned a little bit. I'll show an example of that. Additional height permitted for mixed commercial residential buildings. So it's an incentive if you mixed the, if you do a, propose a mixed-use development along the water or along U.S. One, or another part of the city, that will allow you to have additional height if you do that. And what I mean by mixed use, that would include some kind of residential component mixed in with some kind of commercial or other non-residential component within that development. Another option to address height would include additional height west of South Avenue, South Washington Avenue, and coming up with some kind of incentives for that or some kind of controls for that. So an example of what I mean by transitional height, so the example of the Somerset building that I showed you in the photograph, you saw the two large nine-story buildings with the single-family home next to it. In this illustration here, you would see that the zoning code, if so desired, would have some controls as to how high those, the building can be next to existing development or next to a single-family development, for example. And so the closer it is, or closer to that property line, that side property line, the lower the buildings would be. And then more interior to the development, the higher the building could be allowed to be. So that's just one tool that some cities and counties adopt and utilize. This is just another illustration of what transitional height is. It just kind of shows you the plane where you see on the image on the right, for example, and on the left, too, the larger building, that a portion of that larger building is actually, that is closest to where the single-family home is, actually has the same mass and scale as the single-family home. This is just an illustration of what breezeway, what we mean by breezeway, and this is a control that's currently in our code now. So I just threw this example here, it's like, you could see the water easily from U.S. One. On the Barn Light Building that's on the east side of U.S. One, you can see from the parking lot all the way out to the water. So our code right now has a breezeway criteria where it says that 25% of that width of your lot along the water has to be open to breezeway, has to be open to the water. This allows for a wall to be in front. Sometimes you'll see developments along U.S. One that have that up to four feet, has some additional controls, but generally, where you see that yellow arrow there, that's, you're supposed to be able to allow the breeze to pass through the property there. So one of the options I described, additional height with mixed use. So a maximum height can be increased if, for example, the first floor of a multi-family residential development is commercial, or the first floor of multi-family residential provides access to riverfront, or lower floors provide public parking. So there's a lot of ways you can mix in incentives to allow for additional heights if you want to have some, if you, if you want some additional types of development inside some of these Again, this is additional height west of U.S. One. This was just a recommendation or strategy that came out of the U.S. One Corridor Plan. So in this case, again, going back to the U.S. One Corridor Plan, it said that the, it recommended that the properties east of U.S. One along the water be at the height of no more than 35 feet, but everything west of U.S. One could be increased with some kind of incentive that if they did want to go higher of whatever that maximum is, that they would contribute to some kind of fund. And so that's basically what we discovered through past actions of ordinances by the city since 1992 and the study that was done in 2007. And with that, we'll try and answer any questions about this.
Anybody have any questions with staff? I see none at this point.
Thirty-five feet is how many stories, approximately?
Go ahead, Joan.
It depends on the development typology. Many times, commercial and multifamily structures require more distance between each floor. A lot of times, in modern buildings, the first floor is at least 17 feet, so it depends. But a residential structure could be maybe three stories. For instance, the Solomir Grand Apartments that were just completed, those are three stories, and they were built within the 35-foot height limit. But commercial structures, you may only be able to get two floors out of, so it just depends on the construction type.
Okay. That gives me something to start with.
Anybody else have a question?
Is that a question, maybe Ms. Busaka, you would know. Are there any developers or projects out there where height restrictions are a question or a factor? Any inquiries about, we'd like to do this, but we, we don't know what the height restrictions will be?
I don't know that they've said we don't know what the height restrictions will be. We've certainly had developers come in interested in a more height than they can currently have under our code.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Anyone else? No more questions? Okay. If anybody would like to speak, please come up. We're not going to use a clock tonight or anything. If you can keep it to five or six minutes, I would appreciate it, but we're not going to limit you. Would anybody like to be first? We're here to listen to you tonight. Name for the record, sir.
Hi. Good afternoon or evening. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Kent Oliver. I reside at 3735 Rainy Road in Duluth. In Titusville, I also live in Duluth, Minnesota, part of the time. Came down here about 11 years ago, developed a hotel over on Cape Canaveral. That's 150-room country unit suites. Had looked at, through the development process, the Kennedy Point Marina for 10 years, off and on, but they initially wanted too much money for it to make it happen and work. But today, there's an opportunity to put a development there, improve the marina, and it requires the ability to go up higher because of the constraints of a property. And when I looked at your mixed-use development and the fact that you folks paid good money to have that development, mixed-use development or community plan put together, I looked at that as an opportunity to help you fulfill that dream of yours, which is also my dream. I, up in Duluth, Minnesota, I have a couple of properties that are on the waterfront. One is a multi-story building where I have the first five floors of a 12-story building. That's a hotel. And this particular property lends itself to having a commercial marina, a restaurant, a bar, meeting space, and hotel. You have Blue Origin and SpaceX and other space industries now that have come into the marketplace, and this particular property lends itself to satisfying their needs in providing the housing where they're particularly coming from areas like California. And in looking at this property, I wanted to build something first-class. All of our properties we have are a first-class nature, and I think if you spent some time and went down to Cape Canaveral and looked at our country unit suites, there isn't another one like it in the country that's really a well-built, first-class property. And, you know, the problem with the current height restriction is if you have a property that's two acres to build the hotel on, you can't accommodate parking for the meeting space, you can't accommodate a restaurant. If you look at Shiloh's, for example, on a weekend, they have more than that area in its entirety covered with cars. And so you need to move that building vertically, include a parking garage, and have, in our particular plan, we had some view corridors that were recommended by your consultant. And we are hoping that, you know, your efforts tonight and the input of the general public will recognize that when you have waterfront property and you're limited between the highway and the water, you have to go vertical. So I think that's about all I have to say at this point, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Yes. What height would you need on that property to make that work, what you just described?
Well, there's various.
How many stories is?
You know, I think our initial plan was 12 stories, plus having the commercial and first level would be parking, and then the common area space on the second level, which would be handled with a bridge from the parking garage over to that public space level, and then 12 stories of hotel. So depending on the size of the rooms, if we built a Hyatt House, Homewood Suites, a Residence Inn or something like that, it would require going up to 12 stories above that common space. We could limit that and bring that height down some with some smaller rooms. Nine floors, for example, could potentially work.
It's nine floors above the two floors?
Yes, correct.
So 11. Okay. And that would make that project work, is?
Yeah. One of the factors that also enter plays is, in the last couple of years, you've had some steep construction cost increases. Interest rates have gone up three times. They're talking about increasing them again. So every time you do that, your incremental profit margin tips the wrong direction. So, you know, from the standpoint of timing, the timing would be now, and we'd like to. be able to pursue this project full bore in the future, have your cooperation, of course, and try to, you know, accommodate the needs of the public as well.
Any questions for Mr. Oliver?
I do, and I'm not sure if you know this. How many floors is Kennedy Point next door to you?
I don't know. Thirteen.
Is that 13?
Four to seven.
Seven.
Plus a loft.
He said seventeen.
We have six floors and a parking lot, and then we have double the loft.
So how many altogether is it?
It's eight total.
So eight.
Kevin, is the president of the Development Association...
Okay. I do. Yes, Peter? Oh, not at me. Okay. That helps. So you'd be in line with Kennedy Point, more or less?
Yes.
Okay.
Little bit, little bit higher. They have a peaked roof. We wouldn't have a peaked roof. It'd be a flat roof. But our intentions with that roof area is to have an observation deck for launches and things that go on in the water. Also doing weddings, family reunions, other things pending weather, but that creates some real nice views in all directions.
It's pretty designed.
We have a copy of it up here. Any other questions?
Can I add something?
Are you adding or are you asking him?
I'm adding to what you said.
Go ahead. Well, actually, you'll have to come up to the microphone to do that.
My name is Kevin Morris. I am the president of the HOA of Kennedy Point Condos. I've been there seven years. I have learned in my time there that originally, the Kennedy Point condos are supposed to be four buildings, and the building that I live in now is the only one that obviously was built. But the other three buildings were supposed to actually be nine stories. So actually, they were going to be, actually, it would be 10 with the loft. So it would be 10 stories. So there was already, years ago, when the shuttle program was going on, a plan to develop that property with three more buildings at 10 stories. So it's not like this is something that wasn't planned originally. It just kind of fell to the wayside when the shuttle program started shutting down. But I just wanted to add that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next? It's going to be a short meeting if nobody gets up.
Good evening. My name is Philip Noor, and I have the privilege of representing Mr. Oliver in his pursuit of what we hope is going to be a project that you all are going to be proud of. This is sort of a different project, and frankly, as I look at your code and I listen to the research, it gets a little confusing. Is this a multi-phase project or a multi-use project, including residential? We're not bringing residential to the table. However, as just been talked about by the Kennedy Point, when this thing was all put together, residential was part of it. So as we try to weave our way through your code, I would respectfully say, in some ways, it does have a residential component. You already see it, but its origins start with that, in that regard. I'd also say, we've had some meetings with your staff. Staff has been very cooperative as we've tried to work through the issues that we would have to work through so that we could present a project that falls within your code. And in doing that, our obvious problem starts with height. And in that regard, we've reached out to our neighbors to the north, Kennedy Point. I think you've heard from their president. They don't look upon us as a threat. They look upon us as a neighbor. They have a general idea of what our project would look like, and they're, at least so far, they're not in opposition. And along the way, we've done some things, too. There is a, you may or may not know, there's a property line issue between the Kennedy Point Residential and the marina. We are taking care of that to the satisfaction of the Kennedy Point. The marina itself has fallen into disrepair and somewhat disuse. We've already started spending money to bring that marina around. We're also working with the county. I'm not sure how that's going to work out, but we have high hopes that that will work out so that that park will become functional again and for the use of your residents and be able to boat, to launch boats there. That would include doing a dredging project. That would include benefiting the park, even though we don't own it, we have no rights to it. So all I'm up here saying is, we're trying. We're trying to reach out. We're trying to work with your staff. We want to bring together a project that my client can make it work with nine stories. Twelve would be better, but he is at least willing to look at that. And the difference isn't three stories, per se. The difference is the ton of, type of product and the amount of product that he can bring to your community. So all of these are give and takes as we go along the way. But we're here tonight to just ask for your cooperation, not asking for commitments. Want to continue working with staff and come up with some sort of language that would allow this multi-use project from being able to become a reality within your community within the type of reasonable restrictions that any community should be looking for. We happen to be fortunate that on our south side, there's a lot of open space. Space that we own and space where the county park is. So we have opportunities, as we look in Breeze Way Concept, as we look at setbacks go, that there are areas that we can work in, especially on the south side, to do something different, to do something perhaps unique, and to help improve that project. So I don't want to take any more of your time. I thank you for holding this workshop. I know everyone else has other things they could do, perhaps even including myself. So we are keenly interested in Titusville. We want to become part of it, and we're going to hopefully look forward to your cooperation as we march down this road together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions before, from anyone up here? I see none, but thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Tom Geiten, and I'm a resident at Kennedy Point. And I'm a new resident there. We moved in last August and immediately evacuated for the hurricane. Back to Leesburg, where we came from. I just wanted to put my two cents in. I, when I look out from our condominium, I see a lot of potential on the south side that's just not happening yet. There's a lot of space there. It's a very mixed area. There's empty stores. There's Chockeys across the street. There's Prestige Storage. There's a new Walgreens on the corner. There's a nice Cumberland Farms on the corner. But it needs something. It needs something that's a magnet to pull other businesses in. And I'm talking about bringing a bigger tax base to the city, because the money that comes in there is going to end up in the city coffer as a tax. And I, in looking at the developmental plan, I, and I'm also an environmentalist, I'm encouraged because what they're planning on doing takes into consideration all of the things that have to do with the environment down there. I'm sure you've all been down to see the manatees that hang around. Have you seen them down there? I go over every once in a while just to see them. They've designed it so that when, from the parking lot to the hotel, the walkway goes over the manatee area. They're not doing away with the manatee area. So they're preserving. That's something that's really great for our city. They're concerned about redeveloping the marina, which right now is next to useless, thanks to Irma. But it, but it had been going downhill before that, because I'd been, been to Titusville a number of times as a teacher, bringing students up to watch the shuttle launches, and we would come and look at the manatees also when we were here. So the marina has gone downhill. It is just positive in so many ways that we bring this back. We're looking to have our condominium be a part of that in terms of making the buildings match up as much as possible and sharing space with that development. It just seems to be a very positive thing all the way around, and I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Kirk?
My name is Bruce Ruizie, and I manage the marina. I have been doing so for the last seven years. I am a resident of Titusville for over 20 years, and we're, my family is the family that reaches out to the homeless every Sunday over here and plays the music and all. So we care about Titusville in various different capacities, and I was anticipating personally retiring at the end of the conclusion of the prior owners, who, they were aggressively looking to sell the marina even before Irma. And after meeting with Mr. Oliver and becoming familiar with his background and the accomplishments that they have made, and meeting him personally, and seeing the plans, and knowing somewhat of the mindset, at least of the type of people that come to our marina, it was an amazing prospect there, and I realized, talking with people over the years, and different projects that were originally going to be pursued, the other developers who were going to build a large development there, two condos, some of you may know, recall, and the way the prior owners that Mr. Oliver purchased the marina from, they came into that ownership through some litigation because they had a bridge loan they provided to the developers, and the market had just crashed at around 2007, 2008. So once again, the hopes and the aspirations of a lot of people in terms of the development over there just came to an end. And so now, for the past year, and talking with various different people, mainly the traffic in our area, everyone seems so excited, including happily our neighbors on different ends, Mr. Kirk, which will probably have a word to say, and on our other end, over at the Hilton, that gentleman who's the resident there manages there in support also. Everyone sees a tremendous opportunity of that development over there, not the least of which is what's happening across from us and Merritt Island at the space and all. And it does seem that one issue is the code. The code is going to stand in the way of some very meaningful development, not the least of which is many, many jobs. And I don't think we thought we were going to get to this point tonight, and we're happy for this opportunity. I know I am personally. And, but many jobs, good jobs will be coming in. I've been at Mr. Oliver's place over in Merritt Island, a top-notch place. He owns 19 hotels throughout the country and other properties, too, so they know what they're doing. But I just wanted to say, from a management perspective, it is something that has been waiting to happen for many years, even before I came there. I also live at the marina, and I've lived, my wife and my dog, on our 43-foot boat over there, and also had quite an experience with Irma. And we've, we've been there for probably 12, 13 years, and there's always been this anticipation that something was going to happen there, very meaningful, and it never materialized for a lot of different factors, until Mr. Oliver came along. So I'm very hopeful that things will work out and that this group, your group, and I've had the pleasure of meeting with staff on several occasions, and very gracious, and not, a couple of views, I think I know, Mr. Larisse, I met with you, and so thank you. And before I ramble on my old preacher ways, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kirk?
I'm Bob Kirk, 213 Harrison Street, Titusville. First of all, let me thank the council and the staff for bringing a forum like this together. We really have needed it. Our city has grown tremendously. We have a lot of good things coming up, and some of the ordinances we have on are really blocking good development. People come and look at them and say, "I'm sorry, we can't do that." We build the same thing all over the United States, in every community, and we can't do it in Titusville because of the restrictions. And I think we can overcome that. It's just something that, if anybody was going to complain about a high building on the river, it probably shouldn't be me. I have 31 acres directly across the street from this development. He showed me a sketch of his plan. I love it. It would do so much for the city. It's first-class. I want to go up and watch the launches from the lounge and bar on the roof. Okay? Save me a seat. The plan is great, and the work that he's doing to bring a default marina back into a first-class marina is really needed in Titusville. The things that his project does are just stuff that we really need. And I'm not worried about a five-story parking garage across the street from me. It might block some of my view. There's plenty of view of the river, and the people on the river got there first, and they deserve the right to put something nice on it. And not too many places we've got that we can do that on. In fact, this is really cramped to get that development in this class that he wants to put it, to build it in that class over there. It's really very expensive to do it. It's an extra effort. So I would ask you to please consider projects like this as an individual item and make it a development order by the city that would allow that. And I would like to see the city remove the height restrictions west of US-1. It's not blocking anything but the railroad track. You know, I don't have any plans of building anything taller at this point, but I think if I had, if I had a way to sell that as a 10-story condo, that I could probably, I could probably move on it a little easier going to developers. Communities need that kind of development to pay the water bills and the sewer bills and make those improvements they need. As a Realtor for 41 years, or was it 51?
How time flies.
The economics, I look at very strongly. And that is, a one-mile road will hold about 45 houses, single-family houses. A four-acre parcel will hold 100. Okay? And you get the tax on 100 houses on that area. And it makes a big difference on what the city receives for what they have to put out. It's a lot less effort to send a bill to the condo associations and those people and collect on that value. We recently had our, I live at Somerset, and we recently had that appraised, and it appraised over $90 million. And those taxes are going to the city for that one four-acre piece, rather than spreading it out with urban sprawl all over the city. So we need to look at some of those areas. I'm sure we have other areas other than the river that need to look at this, too, while we're doing it. But I would appreciate if you would think about bringing Titusville back into the... into, to the new market as it are, is today. And, and I know while we did this in, in 2007, I was there with you and I voted to protect the river myself. Okay. But I think those times are behind us now. We need to move on and, and see our city grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Anybody else that would like to speak? I see note, Laura Lee?
Don't, don't move. Okay.
Hold it back.
Okay. It says, "Don't move." I'm, I'm Laura Lee Thompson.
Me and you, I'm at the microphone.
3550 Irwin Avenue in Mims. And I'm, I'm a fifth-generation Titusvillian. And, um, I think that Mr. Oliver's project is really good. I, I would encourage you, um, as you're going through the planning process, to take a trip down to Fort Pierce and look at the city marina in Fort Pierce because they have built the most fabulous breakwater for their marina. And it's all made out of all-natural material. It's got oyster reefs. It's got sand beaches where birds can nest. Um, and it's, it's just a gorgeous thing. Um, and it works. And it's not going to fall down, um, in a hurricane like a, like a regular seawall does. It, it has a whole total different dynamic when the waves strike beaches rather than slamming into seawalls. And there's seagrass growing off of it too. But I think, you know, we have an opportunity to, we, we've been through, I, I've been through so many planning things down through the decades and so many plans sitting on the shelf. And we all get together and we put our little dots on the maps and everything. But I, and I think that that's probably a good thing because we didn't develop in a really, you know, bad way. So Titusville kinda has like a clean palate right now. Um, and we've learned what we want. So we have the opportunity now to really do some nice development in the city. And I, I would encourage you, instead of, um, looking at these developments piece by piece, one by one. So, you know, you may make a decision on Mr. Oliver's development, um, in the immediate future, but then somebody else, like Mr. Kirk says, somebody else is going to come along with another idea and another development. So we have, right now, we're going through the ear process. We have an opportunity to, um, fix our codes and ordinances now so that we don't, you're, you're not going to be plagued, well, not plagued, that's not the right word. You won't be, um, you won't have developers or people with ideas coming at you one by one. You know, we need to fix things so that we can smoothly, um, allow some growth in the city. Um, you've, you've got high-paying jobs coming to the space center. We don't want to lose those people to the central part of the county just because we, we can't provide new and, and good housing for them here in Titusville. They, they don't want to buy a fixer-upper house in Whispering Hills. Um, they want to have a nice condo or, or a, a home, um, on the river, you know, looking out at the space center. And I think that we also have enough public land, you know, through our, our waterfront acquisition so that we're not going to end up with the wall of, um, high buildings that everybody was so scared of 20 years ago when, when we did make these acquisitions. So I, I would encourage you to, um, approach this, you know, with the thought that we put together something so that we can go through these processes and not have to take every individual project one by one and have the people come and comment and you guys agonize over it. Let's fix it while we have the opportunity. And the, my other comment is when people come in on Highway 50, that's like the gateway to our city and they come down Highway 50 and they hit that traffic light and they look at absolutely the ugliest part of the whole Indian River Lagoon, right there where Highway 50 intersects into US-1. This is like the southern gateway of the town. So, you know, let's have some nice development there and then let's use that part of the shoreline. Um, you know, we could fix up something really nice, do some restoration there, have a nice beach so that people won't endanger their lives trying to stand on that block, whatever it is. It doesn't even function anymore because it's got holes in it and the river's just going in and out of it. Let's fix that and make, make a nice entrance to our city there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, that's it. Um, this is a workshop, so tonight we're not making any decisions. Uh, we can have discussion if, if council wants to, but they may want to think about it and then talk to, uh, staff individually. Uh, for myself, I, I will comment. I think you got a great plan there. I, I agree with almost everything that was said tonight. I was around and on council when we had the 35-foot, uh, debacle. That's all I can call it. And the, the reason for it was, for those of you who don't remember, or the, or the reason people were saying, because they didn't want to block the view. Well, you build 20 feet up, you block the view. You're not going to see any better from 20 feet, a 20-foot building than you would with a 100-foot building. Uh, so that never didn't make a lot of sense to me. Uh, actually, height is smart growth. For those of you that have, uh, had anything to do with smart growth, and I'm sure staff will corroborate that, it's considered smart growth because you put less of a footprint down. You leave more for breezeways and, and so forth. So it makes all the sense in, in the world to go, to go taller as opposed to going, uh, going wide. Uh, even that the, where you live, that was originally supposed to be, or they wanted it, certain people wanted it to be four buildings and, uh, that would, it, it actually looked like a penitentiary over there on, on the drawing boards. And, and I was, uh, economic development director at that time. And they wanted the, uh, the project to go, to go in there, the owners, but, uh, that design was terrible. And, and I put it to my board and my board said, no, we'll approve the, uh, the, the idea, the project, but not the concept. So they went back and did what you have over there. Uh, and it added a lot to our community. It added a lot to our tax base, as you pointed out. In fact, most of the things that have been done downtown were only done because that came online and paid the taxes. The, the CRA at that point had, had no money because we had, uh, contracted to do the commons, the parking lot and so forth. And then we had no growth for tax increment financing. So for 20 years, uh, well, I wouldn't say 20, about 16 of the 20 years, there was nothing that could be done of, of major, uh, uh, developments downtown or repairs downtown even. It wasn't till that came in and we were able to bond 2-point-something million dollars, uh, because we had that, that we could redo the downtown and, and bring the roads, the sides, sidewalks wider and do a lot of things we did downtown. So I'm, I'm all for the, the growth part. I agree with you. Um, I think we probably will hear from some other people at a different time, but I think they're correct. The time has come to, um, get in, get in the, the modern world. And this is the biggest opportunity I think we're going to have, certainly for, that we've had for the last 20 years. So I'll stop talking now. Would anybody else like to say anything?
I was going to agree with you.
Good.
Um, over the-
Go ahead.
Oh, I can too. Okay. In that case, I'll talk. Uh, over the weekend, I reviewed the slides and some additional slides. You had one in there of the usable land in Titusville. Do you know which map?
Are you referring to the one about the publicly-owned land or?
No. It showed the wetlands. These were the areas that were vacant.
Yeah, we sent that map out as part of the presentation.
Okay. I just, I got it. And looking at it, I thought, we are running out of land and we either give up wetlands or we build higher. And I don't want to look like Cocoa Beach. And I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings, but I really don't want to look like Cocoa Beach. I don't mind looking like Fort Pierce or Stewart or Winter Garden. Um, so I'm thinking in my head that we might need to bump it up. I don't know how far to bump it up. But I would much rather see us go up than destroy our wetlands because I think that just leads to Titusville flooding. So.
Thank you.
Mayor? I'm going to agree with both of you.
All right.
So we're continuing to go. Um, Ms. Thomas, I thought you, uh, made some, made some good points. Um, I, I like the opportunity that we're at right now. Mr. Oliver, I really enjoy, uh, hearing you talk about the future and what, what can be. And I'm looking forward to being a part of that. I think the opportunity has, has been stated here, but I'll kind of reiterate, a bit of an increased tax base. We've all talked about SpaceX and the, the high-end employees coming in and living in Vieira or living in, uh, Lake Nona or something along those lines. We need them to live here. And, uh, we need to supply something and, and some, uh, homeownership that, uh, they'll come to. And some of what I'm hearing here is, is a perfect answer to that. Uh, it, as Mayor noted, it's smart growth. And as, uh, member Nelson noted, it wasn't long ago, we had a developer up there on another issue speak to us about the fact that we're losing, uh, we, we're running out of area to build longways, sideways. So we've got to consider more and more the, the practicality of, again, smart growth. So, um, I think that this is a, a good come-together meeting on perhaps where we, we need to be heading. And, uh, I appreciate the words that you guys had. And I agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to say something? I mean, do you like to talk? Sure.
Can I add a fourth? I'm just kidding. I do have more. But no, I agree with everything that was said and I appreciate everyone that came out. Um, it really helps us to make our decision and help you guys really in the long run. Um, I do have a couple of questions just for clarification from staff to make sure I'm understanding, um, as we move forward, practically looking at trying to, um, come up with a solution. So downtown Titusville currently has a five-story limit. Is a variance allowed at this time? Do we know?
You can get to 100 feet if you have certain, and there's certain criteria for it.
Okay. Um, and then currently east and west of US-1, there's a 35 limit?
That depends on the zoning district. Our single-family and multifamily residential districts have a maximum of 35 feet, no matter where they are.
Okay. And no CUP is allowed at this time?
In order to increase height, then you'd have to get a variance from the Board of Adjustment. So it would not require, uh, CUP would not, it's not something that you would use.
Okay. There is one-
But for instance, if I could, Urban Village, for instance, there is 50 feet. So it, if the zoning are slightly different depending on where you are. Typically though, the commercial multifamily is higher than single-family.
Okay. There was one slide in there where it looked like council, I guess in 2007, did away with the CUP process?
Yes, that was allowed at one point to increase the height in the shoreline, um, zoning district, which is along the water, up, if you want to exceed the structure beyond 50 feet. And then later on, that ordinance was rescinded or changed in order to prevent that. So the maximum was set at 50 feet, no matter what.
So they could not come to council and petition. They wanted it to be set and no. Okay. Um, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I just was curious to see staff's opinion or take on it at this time. Um, what would be the difference between, you know, putting, allowing the CUP back in place versus raising and maximizing that height to a set standard?
Anytime that you have uncertainty, anytime you have a public hearing process, you have uncertainty. So if you want to put certainty into the process, you have the public hearing process at the beginning under the, when the code is being developed, you have put criteria together and then everyone knows what's happening, whether it's the resident next door or the person who owns the property and wants to develop it. The downside to not having a conditional use permit is that the individual project is not being reviewed. You're simply reviewing it on a-
Right.
-conceptual basis. So those are kind of the, the differences. But I'm pretty certain that if you were to ask the people involved in development-
Right.
-whether they would prefer the code or the conditional use permit, they would say they like knowing the certainty.
And yeah, and that's kind of what I was going to get at with even meeting with some of the developers and attracting businesses to come in place. And what does that process look like? Um, I thought I had one other question. I can't remember. Oh, yes. So if we were to look into potentially lifting the height restriction, changing the height restriction, how does, are we able to, when we're doing that, build in also some of these other conditions that we were seeing in the presentations, such as the breezeways? So we're able to kind of lump them all together within it? Okay. Perfect. Well, I'm excited. Thank you, guys.
I have comments for both councils and maybe some comments on, on policy that I'd like to follow up with, maybe at a different time. So one, I think as council, there's, there's probably three things that, for us to look at in order to move forward with this in a way that doesn't spook folks so bad that they feel a need to get a referendum to preserve waterfront. So one is that, um, just my end state is, I, I am, I have, I need no height restriction whatsoever. So I'm a total removal. Uh, and here's why. I am more concerned with the ability for people to be able to see the river. Once you build something two stories, I can't see it. Once you build it one story, I can't see it anymore. The breezeway concept where it allows you to see through from river to road, I like the ability for public view from road to the river, but I'm not necessarily committed to the breezeway, but that is a good example of trying, what I'm looking for. I'll, to the ultimate extreme, I was fortunate enough to take a trip to Hawaii. In Hawaii, every building they have, you gotta have, uh, somewhere proximity, a way to get to the beach. And the beach is public access, no matter where you're at. I'm not saying to do that. I'm just saying conceptually, the public would like access to at least look at the river. So that, that to me is important. Uh, height restrictions are irrelevant. And like I said, once we get past the story, then I, I can't see it anyway. Um, and I'm good for east or west of the river. And, and I'll use Kennedy, and I don't believe that we're just talking about a specific project, so I'm going to go bigger. Uh, but I'll use Kennedy Point as an example of where I think this is very fruitful. What you have an opportunity is originally a four-phase project. They get one off the gate. The marina is somewhat defunct at this point, where we have a developer who's saying, we'll help with the development of a tool that will enhance more people coming to Titusville staying. Second off, Kennedy Point, the condo, that's 1.4 acres, somewhere about, and it's 42 units. And the problem we have right now, and this is the next portion of what I think we really have to take a look at from a bigger picture, is our conservation. And I think we need to look at that citywide. And here's why. Uh, staff in the past week or so sent on an email that showed lots five acres or larger within the city of Titusville. It's all conservation, basically. So barring us building up, we're either filling conservation, going north or going south. That's it. That's our option at this point. And so I would like to look at what are our, what's our goals for conservation at this point today, now that the, we've had 10 years to kind of sit on a, a lull of development. What's our next step? And that would be inclusive of shoreline goals. So I'm very comfortable with going up because if I can fit 50 property on one acre, I, I want to do that if I can save five somewhere else, right? So that would be the, the second step. I'd, I'd, I'd love to hear, at least council, maybe engage that discussion at a different point. Um, but if we address conservation and we address, uh, access to river view and access to shoreline, that is in conjunction with public parks. So in proximity to parks, again, Kennedy Point, that's a great example. You have direct access to the river adjacent to a property where, where those improvements have been made. I, I would qualify that. And a long one down the road, and this is more fluff than anything. So this one is negotiable. What I would be interested to see in is, and there was a great graphic that showed height differences along the river. So if there is an ultimate just denial by public opinion landslide that we should be touching the river, I don't think that we're there. But at what point- But at what point... I don't think the threshold is up in height. I think it's how much of the river will we allow to develop up? As an example, if I took, from Garden Street to Highway 50, how much of that percentage of that miles of stretch of road can have properties as tall as they want? And then the rest, you're 35 feet or below. And I would be interested to see about what that probably percentage is. Is that clear as mud? Or I think I cleaned that up, probably.
That last question you asked for information was a percentage?
Yeah, percentage of properties that exceed 35%. So if I am somebody who's dead-set against property going up, well, you're going to have to give something. So how much of that riverfront is an acceptable amount to go up on?
What I hear you saying is, "If I have a single-family house, you probably don't want 100 stories besides single-family. You might want a smaller." So you're talking about perhaps looking at transition zones based...
I'm not looking at transitions yet.
But so how do we know what percentage can go up? How are we supposed to figure this out?
I'll take the current standard of 35.
Got it.
So if it's 35 and a... 36 and above, how much of our roadside is currently 35, 36 feet and above?
All right.
How much of it is less than that? Because if, at the end of the day, we have 1/8 of a mile of larger projects and the other X amount of miles is all small, then when I look at a conservation total plan for the city, we probably have some more room to go, to go up because at this point, we're at knock it down and go up on our next cycle of development, I think, because we're old. And that's just about where we're at, so... All right. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Any questions from staff that you might want to ask us at this point?
Well, we have some questions from Vice Mayor Behringer. But if you... Right now, we haven't heard that you want us to put an advisability, perhaps, on council to talk about additional height. Would that be a good next step? I see heads nodding.
Are you saying you want a motion?
We can do that.
Do you want a motion?
No, I think I got the intention.
We got consent.
I'll do a motion if you want one.
You want me to do it anyway?
No. No.
Jolynn, I'm leaving office.
I'm hoping Robert's going to be the motion person.
You got the idea. Okay. All right.
Mayor, there's a couple of citizens that wanted to speak again.
Somebody else want to speak? Or you want another shot at it? Is that it? Okay. Go ahead. We'll get you next, sir.
Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Memes. I think most of the discussion tonight has been along the riverfront, but we have another huge opportunity along the bike trail. And so I'm not sure what the height, allowable height is right now, but from Garden Street to Main Street, that corridor right there, if you go over to Orlando and you like ride down Orange Avenue and you look at the difference between the way Orange Avenue looked 10 years ago and what it looks like now, they've got so many nice condos and, you know, they're... They have young people in them. They got their bikes on the balconies and, you know, they're living a really nice life, real close to downtown Orlando. They can walk to places. And I see our bike trail, you know, we could have those kind of condos along our bike trail, too, you know, where people could live and just jump on their bike and jump on the trail and ride off into the sunset. So I think we need to look at redeveloping that central core of west of the railroad track in downtown Titusville also. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's part of what we're going to be doing. We'll do it in stages, but obviously we have to look at... Obviously, we have to look at the whole town and start rethinking things. Okay. Sir, you wanted to speak again?
I just wanted to...
Sir, you have to go up there. It has to be on the microphone, not so that we can hear it, but for the record. They take the note, the...
Tom Geithen, Kennedy Point. I'm secretary of the board there. I just wanted to add to the vice mayor's comment about the percentage of the land. And I walk from Kennedy Point up to Seers Town every day. And there's very little space that can be developed there. So there's a lot of the riverside that's not going to be developed, so that brings your percentage down right there. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Hector Delgado. I've been a longtime resident of Titusville, 38 years. I've seen a lot of change, been disappointed a lot of times. We are concentrating on the river today, and I understand that. But I would urge you to look at the whole picture. You have an opportunity in Titusville to create corridors for growth. And you can build things and give people ability to do that. You've got the infrastructure of any place. You've got 50. You have Garden Street. You've got Harrison. And those are places that should not be overlooked for corridor. The lady was talking along the trail. That's a great concept. So I would urge you to look at the whole picture. Allow to go vertical. Reduce your carbon footprint. Increase your tax base. And make the community that we all love, that's why we're here, more lovable for people who don't know us yet. But I will urge you, having worked in the space business with Mr. Jordan, at one time, I retired recently, we have a window. It's not open forever. The competition is fierce. We don't have 10 years. We can't talk about this year after year. I would urge you that between now and the end of the year, I would challenge the council to come up with what is needed so that people know what to do. Because SpaceX is not waiting for us. Sierra Nevada, they'll bring their beer and their spacecraft and they're going to move on. Lockheed is moving on. They're going to launch humans next year. They're not going to wait for us. Projects take time. Staff does a wonderful job in getting the projects through on time, but they still takes time. Time is ticking. And I'll leave you with that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the general?
No, just a comment. You know, Hector's got a point there. Lauralee has a point that this is maybe something that we should look at citywide and make some decisions on what really is our plan for the city. And...
Staff's ahead of you a little bit.
Staff's ahead of me?
We are. You remember the visioning process and the comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've been talking about corridors. And we've been busy talking about mixed-use development in corridors and additional height. And we have draft policies that we're going to be happy to roll out.
So if we ask for them, it's not going to put an undue burden on you because you're already ahead of us.
No, it's a matter of fact. Yes, it's a matter of fact. That's why Trevor hasn't been sleeping much because he's been putting all this together late into the evening.
He's looking a little fatigued down there.
He is. We're working him very hard. But we are... So we are working in that direction and we're... I don't know if you saw his smile, but he's very pleased to know that these ideas are gaining acceptance before we even have them on paper. So it's great.
Peggy, he's happy for a night's sleep.
I'd love a night's sleep.
But any rate, that would be my suggestion, is that we consider the whole city.
I think that's a very good suggestion, one that we're already looking at, really. Anybody have anything else? I see nothing. City manager, anything else?
Sir, thanks for council and thanks for citizens coming out to participate in this workshop. I think we've got great guidance and a way ahead, so thank you very much for your time.
I declare this meeting adjourned.